So, thanks for sticking around. I was a little disappointed when the Board of Education people just leave. You can still live in the district, you need to hear from your council candidates, but I'm glad y'all are here. Thanks for sticking around. We've got our council candidates, or at least three or four anyway. Our incumbent was unable to join us this evening. I'm sure he has good reasons. We'll set up with you guys and we'll let you introduce yourselves, give you each two minutes to state why you're running and what you'd like to accomplish. So, if we'll start here, we'll go down the line.
Okay. My name is Sergio Williams. I'm a resident of the Woodlawn community. I'm born and raised in Woodlawn. Went to Gibson Elementary, graduated from Gibson, went to Woodlawn, graduated from Woodlawn. And a lot of the reasons why I decided to run, because as we look at the crime that's going on in Birmingham, a lot of the crime offenders or victims or people that are my peers, you know what I'm saying? When we look at the, I think, three kids that got killed over the past ten days, like as I look at it, those are people that are my peers, little kids, you know? So, I'm seeing my friends and my peers lose their kids and as well as die to John Valens. And so, it encourages me to be an example, as well as when I hit the ground and I talk with other neighborhood officers and our elderly and I see the battle that they're facing with council and health issues on the other end of our neighborhood, it just put me in a situation where I felt as if just standing on the sideline and being Iowa wasn't an option anymore. And I like to think that when you have polluted water, how you clean that polluted water is by getting fresh water. And so, that's what I want to be to that solution. I want to be that fresh water and that fresh wind to come and bring something new and a change that I think that we need to do because I think my age group is poorly represented at City Hall. And so, that's one of my reasons why I ran. I wanted to be an example and help lead the fight to push this issue forward ahead. And I'm Sergio Williams.
I'm Mary Jean Lemay. Moved to Birmingham in nineteen eighty-seven to attend Southeast Revival College. Moved to Norwood eight years ago and got immediately involved because of a couple of neighbors in this room that signed me up for Block Watch and signed me up to do our National Night Out event. And I suddenly realized that the rules on the north side and the east side and the west side are not what is acceptable downtown by the city of Birmingham.
Totally.
And I can't tell you the first year that I lived in Norwood, how many times people told me, "Oh, you can call and call and call and the city will never do anything about that." So, I got to working with some of the neighborhood presidents on the south side and asked them what they did. And they told me that they educated all the residents and they weren't the only people calling. They would, if a resident calls somebody in the Forest Park community, calls a neighborhood officer to do something, the neighborhood officer educates them on how to do something. So, over the last eight years, I have worked with everybody on my block. It's funny, I have a couple of people looking in Norwood and they're like, "We want to live on your block." Everybody on my block knows everybody. They know their cars, they know who's coming to go in out of their house, they know when they're getting their house painted. And the most fun thing that has happened recently is when we first moved to Norwood, there were never kids in our park. There were never kids walking around. And when you say community, if the kids can't safely walk around your neighborhood, then you don't have a community. And this past Halloween, we had a hundred and seventy-five kids ring our doorbell and my neighbor said, "Who invited all these kids?" And so, you've got to have a community and that's why I'm running.
My name is Ford Bedway. I'm originally from Detroit, Michigan, but I'll tell you guys, I'm asking for your vote on August twenty-second for City Council, not to do anything new, but to continue doing what I've been doing in the communities and throughout Birmingham and throughout our inner cities, inner communities here inside the city. A community, to be honest with you guys, I've worked in several different other communities in Birmingham and, you know, one thing that I know people always stress about is the crime. But what I like to do and what I was taught is you don't go to the end of the road, you go to the starting line and then you see what's going on there. And when I looked at our communities and the ones that I serve and the people that are doing the work in the community, I found out that there's a disconnection from the residents, the officials of the neighborhood and officials downtown. So, in me running, I wanted to feel that void, to make that full connection. So, the things that we've been doing to help change the mindset of our young men, to stop the violence in our communities, the encouraging the youth to be, to change in their community, not to expect that from coming to come no one from nowhere else. I like a saying that I learned from one of the elders that say, "Our children need to see success." I know, I teach preschool inside Kingston area, I know the mindset of some of the kids there, but in me running, just to give y'all a funny story, about three weeks ago, I was in Stockton Park and we were doing a photo shoot and one of the children over there heard of the children and said, "Hey, guys, that's the president over there," you know? And that kind of stuck out to me for real because for somebody to look at me and how I am and how I carry myself and to feel that I'm a president, that's doing something right to show our children that you have a brighter future ahead of you rather than a jail cell or a hospital there, right?
Thank you so much for taking the time to introduce yourselves. So, we'll go back and forth. So, we'll start with you. Mr. Pedway, what is the most pressing issue, I'm going to ask, in the city as well as in District Four?
Well, to me, there are several issues that each one of us could point out and, but I'll tell you all what I feel myself is the most pressing issue, is the lack of unity. I feel like no matter what the problem is we may face here in the city or within my district, if we were all more unified and on the same page, we could have a bigger impact in fighting those injustices and fighting those issues. We deal with trains inside District Four. Well, it's not trains only in District Four, there's in District Five, there's some in District Eight, but if we're all not unified and all not communicating with each other and not showing a love and respect to each other, no matter what part or side of town or what community you're in, we're not going to be able to address those same issues. See, I could be fighting about a train in Collegeville and get the runaround and somebody in Avondale, on the south side of Avondale, went and dealt with the same issue but got results because they knew how to take it, knew who to take it to and how to present it in order to get results. Well, we're all working on the same page and we all can know how to present it, all know how to send it in and address it and get those results. So, once again, my biggest, I feel like the biggest thing is unity in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Pedway?
I believe the most pressing issue in our city, and nobody ever wants to talk about this, is poverty. Poverty affects every single thing that you look and touch. The reason we have blight in this city is because of poverty. There's people on my block that can't afford to buy a new lawnmower. There's people on my block that can't afford to fix the car that's broken down and sitting in their driveway. It's real easy to drive down the street and say, "Look at that blight." You have to realize, how did that blight get there? It's because they don't have money to fix these problems. If you look at a lot of the issues that, I mean, pick an issue, we don't talk about poverty. The city of Birmingham, the zip code three-five-two-three-four and the Collegeville zip code, those zip codes are the fourth and fifth poorest zip codes in the state of Alabama. And when people think of Alabama, they think of the black belt being the poor area in the state of Alabama. Some of the poorest neighborhoods in the state of Alabama are in District Four. And we don't address it. It's great if we have after-school care, but I see the kids at six o'clock, they walk out of Norwood School, they walk out of Englewood School, they're latchkey kids, they're walking home, their parents still aren't home from work because their parents are riding the bus.
Wow.
And so, you have to, you can't just provide after-school care, you've got to have a rec center and a computer lab and you've got to address every single need. Transit is a huge part of that. If you can bring a job to our neighborhood, we have a situation where there's going to be jobs coming to the edge of District Four, it's going to be very difficult to get to those jobs. If you try to ride a bus to get to a job in the city of Birmingham, we all know that adds four hours to your day. And that's if the bus goes there, if the bus makes it there that day. And good luck on Saturday and for sure on Sunday, if your employer wants you to work, you're not going to make it.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
One of the top pressing issues that I think as far as the city and the district is public safety, which is crime and health. I think that when we're living in a district and we're losing our kids at ages eight and two and three years old, then on the other end of the district, we have our elderly fighting council battles and fighting pollution and fighting for their health. I don't see how we could be healthy enough to fight for a better neighborhood or a better community or a better city. So, I think one of the top issues for me is addressing crime and health because with us losing our kids and our elderly, it's kind of hard to have any type of population growth, any type of economic growth when you have the population swindling away from lack of public safety and lack of health. So, I think that's one of my top issues, getting help for our elderly as well as increasing public safety for our youth. So, I think those are the top pressing issues for District Four as well as the city.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. We'll start with you for our next question. How do you propose to better communicate with the citizens in your district?
One of the first things that I tend to do to increase communication with the communities is first by showing up. I think that's the first thing you have to do in order to be transparent and to be there for the community and connect with them, you have to, one, show up and be willing to listen and do the work. So, I think that one of my ways is increasing by always attending meetings, being there, being visible, not always somewhere else doing something or having the people questioning, "Where am I and what I'm doing?" It's being there and being able to be there to do the job. So, I think that's the first part of connecting with the community is by first getting someone who is going to be able to be there and be there on time and be able to do the job as well. So, I think that's part of being there and being on time, which is simple, that I don't think it takes a rocket scientist to make no figure out something.
One of the ways I think we need to better communicate with the citizens of the city is to be accessible and I don't think City Hall is very accessible to the city for the reasons I just talked about. You're working three jobs and you've got kids at two different schools and you're using the city bus system, you're not going to make it to City Hall to talk to your counselor. So, what I would like to see is, I would like to see District Four have an office in District Four where people that don't have transportation could potentially walk there. And I would like to see besides a District Four office be where there's a day, at least monthly, if not weekly, where I would be at the Englewood Library at a certain time every week or I would be at the Woodlawn Library at a certain time every week. One of the disconnects I think has always been that the counselors only ever meet with the neighborhood officers. Again, going back to poverty, there's a lot of neighbors that can't attend neighborhood meetings, so you don't always hear about every single issue that's going on if you're only meeting with the neighborhood officers. So, I think you need to be accessible in the neighborhoods besides just at the neighborhood meetings because the neighborhood meetings are often at times where people are at work. They're usually seven o'clock at night, people with kids aren't going to come home from work, get their kids and feed them and run back out to a neighborhood meeting. So, I think we need to have, spend less time as counselors in City Hall and spend more time in the neighborhoods, communicating with the neighbors. A real simple tool that we've been using in a couple of neighborhoods in District Four is Nextdoor and we have finally gotten the mayor's office and the Birmingham Police Department participating in that process and I think that we need to get, everybody has a smartphone. I see smartphones in everybody's hand in this room right now. So, you can put Nextdoor on that app, you don't have to have a computer in your house to get on Nextdoor.
Can you state the question?
Yes. How do you propose to better communicate with the citizens in your district?
Well, what I, what I plan on doing, one of the reasons of me running, as I stated earlier, was to bridge that gap and bring that connection. What I'll do is, just like I stated earlier about one of our biggest, one of our biggest issues here in the city in District Four is unity. And each one of the communities, not only in District Four, but the ones that I've had the pleasure throughout Birmingham have attended, I've always made myself a servant and humbled myself to express love to meet anybody and to understand what they have going on. If you're not coming to the community, if you're not, if you can't speak to everybody in the community, it doesn't matter if the area is bad or not, if you can't walk in there and genuinely introduce yourself, if it's humbleness and they know that you're coming with genuineness, guys, I go, go some of the worst places, as she stated, three-five-two-three-four in Collegeville area. Well, whenever it's an issue over there, it doesn't matter whether it's ten o'clock at night or twelve o'clock at night or one o'clock at night, if I'm available to go there, I'm going to go there. And I'm not going to go there looking and judging the people inside the area because I know that we all come from different walks of life. Now, the Nextdoor app, I am a member of the Nextdoor family, but I can tell you this, people of my demographic and people of my age, of my age group are not using the Nextdoor app. So, guys, we have to break the original, the regular, what can I say, the shell that we're in and be willing to step out and to tell people, give people the knowledge that they need to be successful inside the city. We have several different programs going on that people don't know in the city. And whenever I meet somebody, no matter who it is, I'm always going to enlighten them and tell them something that's going to better them in life in general. So, I mean, I'll continue to build that unity to spread that connection.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Pedway, I'm going to start with you on this next question. How do you plan to work with the Chief of Police and the Birmingham Police Department to address safety in District Four?
Thank you for asking that question. As was stated earlier, to be a public servant, you don't have to be a public official. And I've been just that. When it comes down to the crime in our communities, guys, I don't, I don't call the police on my street when there's shooting going on in my neighborhood. See, they know me inside my neighborhood from the love that I show and the unity that I spread in my community. So, when I hear that shooting, I don't call the police, I go out there, "Man, what's going on? You know I've got five kids in here, right?" And y'all might think I'm crazy, but I'm telling you, we, I have had people put their guns down, tell me, "Man, you know what? I apologize." I know you don't even, you don't even condone it, you don't even do that. When you hold yourself to a certain standard and those around you to another certain standard, you'll see how that trickles and how that works and helps solve the crime. Now, I've worked with the Fire Department and the Police Department, a lot of them know me down there, but they know me because I try to tell them that some of, some of the laws that we intake and some of the things that we do here in the city, we do from a top-down perspective. So, I try to give them a bottom-up perspective to know that everything that may look good on paper, when it's actually intact into our community, it's not good. Chief Roper know me from speaking against the BVRI from when it first started. And it was just recently when he came back and stated what I stated originally was, "This is not going to solve our crime epidemic." Guys, putting money inside the police, increasing the money inside the police station is not going to cure our crime. Now, I do understand that we do have to work with each department and I'm willing to work with each department. The Fire Department, I am aware that they're underpaid and understaffed and one of the things that I also helped fight on was the fire station for Kingston, that it should have never, it should have never got tore down and never went that long without getting that proper improvement.
Thank you, Mr. Pedway. Mr. Pedway?
The biggest problem I've seen with talking with Chief Roper over the past eight years is being able to keep the officers that we get that understand our community and that work with our community and want to be a part of the solution. We'll go for a year and we'll have a really good officer working out of the North Precinct and the next thing I know, he's moving to Homewood because Homewood's paying him more. And you get, you get what you pay for. And there's plenty of room to cut out some travel expenses and some party expenses and to give some salary increases to the people out on the streets. A Birmingham policeman is not going to be able to stop a crime in the middle of a crime being committed. But if we have every position filled, right now I believe it's over eighty officers that we can't fill those jobs. We can't fill those jobs because we're competing with twenty-six surrounding municipalities that pay more than the city of Birmingham. We don't give them raises. And then we get a good officer that understands and gets to know the neighborhoods and patrols the neighborhoods and we, you'll see this in certain neighborhoods, Fountain Heights will be real hot for a while, they'll get a good officer over there and he patrols, he knows where the problems are and he's patrolling. When they're patrolling, you very rarely see, and the policeman was right there and saw the crime happen. The policemen are out there patrolling and they're doing prevention and they're figuring out whose parents they need to go talk to. We get those good officers, they get to know those neighborhoods and then we lose them and we find out they've gone to work for best behavior. So, as a counselor, we've got to be able to find the funds in the city budget to pay what the surrounding municipalities pay and get the highest quality of men and women in those uniforms. It doesn't need, we, we should be hiring people away from other municipalities instead of everybody hiring away from us.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Could you repeat the question again?
Yes, sir. How do you plan to work with the Chief of Police and the Birmingham Police Department to address safety in District Four?
One thing that I would recommend for Chief Roper is if we can have regular officers that patrol our neighborhoods because when we have officers that's in and out and don't, that are not familiar with the residents in the community, sometimes there's friction, well, not sometimes, there is friction between the police and the community. And if we had regular officers that engaged in community engagement, I think that will mend the relationship between the police and the residents and where it doesn't have to be in a hostile environment where they are constantly patrolling the people because the community know their neighborhood officers. And it's more of a community feeling and they feel more at home and feel more protected because they know, they know their community officer and their community officer is engaged in the community. I think that would mend the relationship between the community and police officers as well as presenting accurate crime data. Because at our Neighborhood Association meeting, sometimes the crime data isn't accurate and they leave out certain crime data. And without that crime data, we can't analyze the situation in a strategic way and an educated way. And so, sometimes data and statistics can be a vital way of analyzing the situation and seeing how can we approach it as a community as well as mending the relationship between the police officers and the community. And so, that's my assumption and recommendation that I would suggest to Chief Roper and the Police Department of Birmingham.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. We'll start with you for our next question. What council committees would you want to sit on if elected in Milwaukee?
I'm glad you asked that question. One of the committees that I would want to chair over is environmental justice because those are, I think, public safety and health is one of my top concerns as a district. So, environmental justice is one of the committees that I think would be a place where I could really be an advocate for and really bring change in a lot of things that I am promising and things that I'm advocating for that I want to see done in District Four. I think that would be a great committee to start to address a lot of environmental issues that we are facing throughout District Four because there is an event that we have in September about the health of the Woodlawn community and they're going to release data that's even saying that the pollution in the Woodlawn area and a lot of areas that people may not be aware of, of pollution is going to be exposed in September. So, I think that if I was elected, that would want to be, that would be one of the committees that I would want chairing because I think that that's a pressing issue in District Four, knowing that we're in the Jones Valley area where a lot of steel and minerals and industrial plants, location is a hotspot that Jones Valley area is. I think that would be the committee that I could do the best and serve my best on. So, that's the committee that I would sit on.
That's a great question. It's something I've thought a lot about. First, I want to say, I would attend all of the committee meetings. One of the things I see right now is the counselors don't go to each other's meetings. There's one or two counselors that go and that's a huge problem I see in moving things forward through the very tiresome, lengthy process at City Hall is when it gets to the committee in the whole or when it gets on the dais, you have counselors starting at the very beginning because they weren't in the committee meeting when the details are hashed out. But to answer the question, I would want to be on the Transportation Committee for a multitude of reasons. Most of them include why I'm involved in the organization, I believe, in Birmingham. There is a huge disconnect between everybody in this state knowing what's going on with everything with all of our roads. And one of the very first things that I did as a resident of my neighborhood is attend a meeting at Battle Auditorium and reached out to the late Maxine Parker and I was very upset, as she was, to find out that she had attended a meeting with Aldott and she was not told that the Thirty-first Street exit in 2059 was going to be closed. And she and I learned that information together. I was horrified as a resident that Aldott had not reached out to her, something had changed along the way and she missed a meeting here or there. But she was able to work and partner with us and help us really get that exit back open. The second one real quick is Park and Rec. Pick any of the ninety-nine neighborhoods in this town, Park and Rec owns a park or a building or a community center. In most neighborhoods, they own three of those. I would like to see those open year-round and find the money in the budget to offer every sort of job training and every sort of activity that this city has to offer in those, those properties.
Thank you. Thank you. Not stealing Sergio's answer, but one, one of my main concerns for not only District Four but Birmingham is the environment. And so, I would say my first choice would be the Environmental Protection Department Chair. And one of the reasons is why is because in working with several different organizations here that have been working on, been testing the pollution here inside the city, we find out that several of the chemicals that have been tested have been affecting our residents as Mr. Sergio stated, not only in the North Birmingham area as we're familiar with what's going on there, but throughout Birmingham. Kind of give you a little history, Birmingham's original water source was Five Mile Creek. That creek went from Belsima to Center Point. Prior to that creek closing, it was contaminated heavily by several other companies, pollution companies that still exist here in Birmingham right now. Guys, we haven't addressed that issue. My incumbent sits in that position, chairs that committee right now, but when the residents of the city have contacted him to see what had, what is going on, what's the thing he has to say about it, we find out that they haven't even had a meeting yet. See, something's wrong with that. But when I see that we're talking about that we're, we're trying to protect the children and I see that the, the health tests that were done for the children in Hudson had them at higher health risks than the children that were tested in Homewood or anywhere across the mountain, then I feel like as a city council of that district, you should be irate at what's going on and the front-runner for getting these companies closed down. Not just restrictions, but closed down. And we haven't seen that, guys, not from a top-down level. We got to hold each other accountable and be in an department that really is going to help the people and citizens of Birmingham.
Thank you, sir. And I'm going to start with Mr. Pedway. What are your thoughts on the recent city budget and are there any changes that you would make?
Yes, I've, I've been publicly noted talking about the budget. I actually did a, did a report with Channel thirteen about two weeks ago on Parks and Recs, just to go, not to talk about the budget as a whole, but just to kind of touch a few areas. When I look at what we're doing as a city and what we're planning on putting our focus in and future in the city, I look at what we investing in and, or should I say, the lack of investments. We know to, to stop crime, which is one of the big things, and property, which is one of the big things in our city. Well, to deal with property, we can't just throw jobs at it. See, we had big corporations come in and I, as well as several people that I'm connecting with in the community, know that you can work two forty-hour jobs a week and still come home short on things that you need to take care of. When it comes down, when it comes down to building a community, as Ms. Lemay stated earlier, the Parks and Recs, we invest lowly in our schools here in Birmingham, our education system and our small, small businesses and our parks. There should not be, if we're planning on growing the city for the people already here...
There should not be, if we're planning on growing the city for the people already here in the city, then we have to put heavy investments in our education. We have to put inside our parks and recs to make the people wanna come out, out of their houses and build a camaraderie with those, at a unity of love with their other residents in the community. I could talk forever on this, on this budget, man, but, but... As your city councilor, as your future city councilor, know that every dime that we spend is not just being spent because somebody came and did a good presentation for it and I feel like that's good enough for me to write a check. It'll be because I researched it, I followed it, and I know what the effect's gonna have on my citizens and my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, your thoughts on the city budget and any changes that you would make?
Today, my thought is, why isn't it approved? Um, again, this is really concerning to me that we get to the budget and finance department, if they, uh, they create a budget and then counselors start asking questions after the fact. It seems like every year it takes them six months to approve a budget. And it's because so many of them missed a meeting here or there. And here we are again, it's almost September and the budget's not approved for next year. This is something we do every year. This shouldn't be this complicated. And we all know it doesn't get approved because everybody has their own special pet projects in there. One of the things I'd like to see eliminated is the mayor's security budget. That's a million dollars right there that we could take and put into the programs at the parks and recs and the city centers. The city owned buildings, that the city already pays staff at a lot of these rec centers. We could take that million dollars and turn it around and hire people to have programs in the rec centers, a whole lot more hours. Open the, right now, it's ninety-six degrees. The fourteen swimming pools in this city are open seven weeks out of the year. That is ridiculous. We spend a lot of money to keep these pools open and running and they're open like thirty hours a week. We should have those pools, those pools in all those neighborhoods should be something going on there all the time. Uh, going back to the police, we have to increase the salaries of the policemen. We have to increase the salaries of the firemen. When you do that and you retain employees, in the long run, you're going to save money because you're not gonna keep training those employees. And the last thing is, you know what's in every neighborhood or every community in this town is a library. And the city of Birmingham does not give as much as all the other municipalities. And we've gotta be giving more money to the libraries because that's a place that those people can reach those kids. That becomes a defunct after-school program in a lot of neighborhoods.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams?
Um, could you repeat that question again?
Yes, sir. What are your thoughts on the recent city budget and what other changes that you would make?
Um, I, I think I agree with, um, Mr. Lemay on, first of all, being able to pass a budget. I think that's something that's, um, should draw concern to anyone who has something that we do every year. So, that's one of my top concerns, being able to pass a budget on time, as well as more funding for our education. I think that, um, we spend, as a city, we spend more money, um, on non-profits than we do on education. And so, one of the things that I would want to see changed is we can match those funds. Because I, I, I agree that economics is a key issue in our, uh, city, which is the root cause of poverty. But I don't understand why we're not funding education at that same rate as well. So I think if we're spending more on non-profits than not on education, that's a big problem. When it should be matched donations as well as, um, more parks and recreation funds. Uh, we don't see programs such as Pini anymore, um, neighborhood, um, recreation, selling of programs. And so that's one of the things that I would advocate for more, is spending the same amount as we spend on economic development on education as well. Just as the push that the mayor made for the police department, we should be pushing for our education and funding for our education in the same exact way. So I think that that's one of the things that I would want to see changed, is the funding for education and parks and recs. Uh, so that's what I think about this.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Uh, let's build a, of relationships in the city here. Um, we'll start with you. What, how do you propose to, uh, better improve relationships with your fellow counselors and with the mayor?
Um, I, I, I do agree being a city councilman and being a public servant, that, uh, relationships is everything. And, um, I believe in having a solid relationship with anyone regardless of, um, position or status of what it is. I think I, I, I'm a great, I'm great at working with people and under bad circumstances. Um, you look at, um, my neighborhood association run and the controversy with being, um, current president. And, um, we was able to work it out through that and still get removed in Neighborhood Four. As well as I think that out of all the debates, I think this is a race where I think all the candidates have a good relationship. I've stayed at Mr. Lemay's house and ate, I mean, tried lemonade and sat on her porch. I've sat in, in, um, Lawwood with Cory during campaign and we just sat down and had conversations. So I think that I'm pretty good at having solid relationship with, um, people regardless of, of political status, positions, or what it may be. I think I'm a person that's for moving the neighborhood, district, and city forward. Regardless of who it is, I'm willing to work for them. We got the same goal. We all here saying we want to serve District Four. Why can't we be cauldron and work together if that's what we genuinely want to do? So I think that, um, my relationship with the people that are sitting at this table, as well as my neighborhood and, um, everyone I have, we may not always agree, but we're able to sit down and get to move forward. So I think that I would be great at working with the council and mayor, regardless of status, position, or who look I have.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Lemay?
Think a good thing to remember is a broken clock is, is correct twice a day. If you don't agree with the mayor and you don't agree with the counselor, that doesn't mean that you don't work with them. One of the things that drives me crazy in this city is we've set up a system where everybody just believes in their district. And we have a mayor that, whatever, whichever mayor we elect, he's gonna have an area of town that elected him and that he's gonna be loyal to that, that side of town. What I would like to see is when there's an open house at a school that just got six million dollars worth of renovation to it, every counselor shows up and the mayor shows up. What I would like to see when the mayor plans an event, that I don't show up at a mayor-planned event and the counselors tell me they didn't go to that event because the mayor planned that event. I would like to see that when an invitation goes out for something good or if something bad is going on and somebody needs to be there, where you see something bad going on, there's more than one counselor there. Um, we have become divided by districts where people say, oh, that's not my district, I haven't been there. Um, I think one way we can do that is, and they've done a little bit of this and I've applauded them for this, the budget meetings have been held out in the communities and they've started to have city council meetings out in the communities. I'd like to see all these people get out of City Hall a whole lot more. I'd like to see, we got fifty city council meetings a year, I'd like to see those in fifty different places. That we could, in two years, we could have a city council meeting in all ninety-nine neighborhoods. And I think that that is how, if I know your neighbors and you know my neighbors, I'm gonna be able to build a relationship with you and I'm gonna be able to work with you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Pedwin?
Um, I'll tell you all, to be honest, I, I don't look at the mayor or the city council any different than I look at any average human being. My philosophy is want to love. I say I love life, therefore I love everyone. They ask me, how can you do that? Because you're a representation of life, therefore I have no choice but to love you. Even more so despite what your outward appearance is, you're a human being. Therefore, you're part of humanity, therefore I should respect you as such. Now, I've, you could find plenty of videos of me going against the mayor and a couple of different other city councils. But they, you also can find even more videos of me in each one of their districts and each one of their communities at several different meetings, working together for the cause. Even my incumbent, who is not here now, who, you know, probably don't know me from can of paint other than me just now running, being honest, could go to some, some things, some projects that was done, whether it was, uh, from the mayor's office or the city council office, that were done in District Four, that me and my group of, group of volunteers, so to speak, they call us a non-profit, but we're not a non-profit. We're a group of men from the inner cities in Birmingham that came together and said, we're gonna change the, the outlook and the direction of our communities. Guys, it don't matter what walk of life people are from, we, I just, um, led a, a Stop the Violence Rally on Saturday where we had Caucasians, blacks, a few Hispanics, all together. People from all different walks, walks of life, church clergies, um, my, um, priest and avengers, and even some, um, s- city council candidates, as Mr. Williams spoke, me and him does have a, a good relationship. Me and Mr. Lemay have a nice relationship. And I continue that relationship and that love spread leaving that city council.
Thank you. Mr. Lemay, I'll start with you on this.
Okay.
What will you do to increase metro co- cooperation as outlined by the recent report on metro growth and challenges?
You know, that's a really, really hard question. If somebody knew the answer to it, I think it would have already been done. Um, it's something I sat down with Ann August, our recently departed transit director, and talked to her about. Um, I think it's gotta be done one person at a time. And the people that are gonna have to do that are the people that work downtown and drive over the mountain and leave. And there's people that do the opposite of that. There's people that live in Birmingham and they drive to the Mercedes plant or they drive the Lincoln. We've got to get everybody to invest in where they work and where they live and to realize how that can, how that can change. I, I think there's a good plan afoot that, we have an existing structure where that works in the Jefferson County Library Cooperative. We're trying to get that with the transit cooperative, but there may be some opportunities that we can start with some baby steps in getting people to learn how to work together. We, there, I used to say there were twenty-three surrounding municipalities. It's actually like twenty-six or twenty-seven. And that doesn't count the influences of Montgomery in our city. So, it's, it's something that has gone on since nineteen seventy. A lot of people have worked really hard to try to get it to work. I think we've gotta start at the grassroots level and we've got to get everybody that works in the city of Birmingham to believe in the city and to realize they're part of the solution.
Mr. Williams, look over here, please.
Um, state your question here, Miss Shaw, if you can.
What will you do to increase metro cooperation as outlined by the recent report on metro growth and challenges?
Um, I would like to say that I'm, um, pro Birmingham. And, um, so, when it comes to cooperation, that doesn't, because I'm pro Birmingham doesn't mean I'm anti-cooperation. So I'm, I'm willing to work with any party that's willing to work with me. I think that that's a question that has to be asked on both ends. I don't think that that's a question that, uh, candidates from Birmingham only have to ask. I think that's candidates from over the mountain, Hoover, and other cities as well have to ask and answer that question as well. Um, are they, are they willing to cooperate and work with us? You know, because a lot of things that we do, um, we, we face, we face a lot of opposition. So I'm, I'm a pro Birmingham and I'm willing to work with anyone who is willing to work with us. But I think that that's a, a two-way street and they have, they have to meet us halfway. But I'm totally pro Birmingham.
Thank you. Mr. Pedwin?
I'd like to say I'm, I'm in the middle. I, I agree with Mr. Sergio on being pro Birmingham, but also agree with Mr. Lemay. Guys, we know that we have two Birminghams that we live in there. We have the regular Birmingham which we're in now and we have what's called the greater Birmingham, which has been controlling Birmingham for, I could say, quite some time. I do believe that we have to cooperate with, with other municipalities around us, but we need to make sure that we're working with them for the right reasons and for the right cause. We helped build Hoover. I remember when Hoover was just a set of woods. I remember when Fort Lauderdale wasn't as much as it is and Trustville as well. We helped build those areas up and the people in our city left and went to those particular areas. And now we're, we're at a point to where we want to work with the outside counties that took our residents away to pull them back into our city. I'm against that. I feel like first we have to deal with the people that are here in our city before we can even attract other people. See, we have programs here, land bank programs, that could help the people that are here dealing with poverty that don't know where, don't know if their landlord is gonna kick them out this month or not. Help them get houses, dilapidated houses in our community so they can be a vital part of our communities and start, start working and investing back into our community. When we're talking about jobs, we got people, like you said, that goes down to advanced to Mercedes plants. Why are we not increasing and investing in our small businesses and making more entrepreneurs here inside our city so we can keep the resources here in our city? See, when people leave, you don't, you know, do a parade and make the house look all good to make them come back. You take care of those people inside the house to build them up so we never recognize the people that left in the first place.
All right, thank you. Uh, so we are gonna open it up for audience questions. Do we have any questions? Yes, sir.
One of the neat things about Birmingham city government is that we have the Citizens Participation Plan where all, all of our neighborhoods have a small organization. They get a, a little bit of money every year, two thousand dollars. Uh, would you wish for the neighborhoods associations to get more funding? Because right now it seems like there's too little for us to actually do anything in the neighborhood. But it's enough money that it causes the city to have to have administrators and all these expenses to run the program. Or would you just favor stopping the citizens participation plan, trying to do something else?
Chris, start with Mr. Pedwin and then we'll work out again.
I tell you, that kind of goes, kind of goes into the Mayor Council Act as well. And I, I'm very avid about getting that changed. I, I do know that one of the things that have happened to our communities, they've lost the power. And we used to have our own grocery stores in, in the neighborhood. We didn't have to wait so long for our parks to get done. It was already, we already had the funds to do that. Right now, even though we have a door at our, at our library that needs to be fixed and we're waiting on a long, lengthy paperwork to come from the city on to get it fixed when if the funds was properly there and available for the neighborhood, we could have got that fixed and done in the gym. We have people in our neighborhood that does that type of work, that we can keep those, that money, keep that income, that business inside our neighborhoods. I'm definitely all about giving the neighborhoods back their power with structure. And how we gonna do that is we gonna have to revise that Mayor Council Act.
Thank you.
All right, is everybody recording this? Because I'm about to say something that y'all are gonna hear very often in this town. Ninety-nine neighborhoods is too many. It doesn't work. Out of the ninety-nine neighborhoods, there's two neighborhoods that don't even have neighborhood officers. The ninety-nine neighborhood system was invented when the federal government was gonna give each neighborhood in an urban area in nineteen seventy a whole heck of a lot of money. I believe it was twenty thousand dollars a neighborhood. Birmingham used to have twenty-three communities. Part of the Citizens Participation Plan includes twenty-three communities. The communities have never been functional since we've created these ninety-nine neighborhoods. My suggestion is that we get rid of the ninety-nine neighborhood associations and we have twenty-three communities. That's where our population growth is going to balance out some more. It's where you're gonna build some community relationships that don't, you know, just like people say, hey, I'm a city councilor, you're having something in District Four, that's not my district, I'm not coming. The same thing happens on the neighborhood level. I walk across Highway thirty-one and people say, that's not my problem, that's your problem. When you start having neighborhood officers that have to work together and guess what? Then they're all gonna have ten thousand dollars, which guess what? The mayor just announced he's gonna give every community, that all twenty-three communities are gonna be given ten thousand dollars. It's the first time the communities have been given money. There's too many neighborhood associations that don't do anything with their money. There's too many neighborhood associations that can't find three functional neighborhood officers. It's too many. It's too much to support our population. So, the, the Citizens Participation Plan includes a process for the communities to operate and I think we need to work that process in that plan.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Um, to address that question, I agree with you, um, uh, because a lot of times the neighborhood association don't receive enough funding to do a adequate project or a decent project. We are stuck with, um, small We are stuck with, um, small-scale projects. When, I agree with Ms. Lemay, ninety-nine neighborhoods is too many. When you look at the neighborhood list, I think it's more than two that don't have a neighborhood officer, a neighborhood president. And if they do have a neighborhood officer, I, out of ninety-nine, maybe only four of them have email, where they're act, act, really see, receiving information that's coming from downtown. On top of that, a large portion of those are senior citizens, who if they had email, still wouldn't be able to properly use that. So a lot of, in a lot of neighborhoods, if you enter the North Birmingham neighborhood, where a lot of neighborhood officers are older, that's how they are being taken advantage of, because they can't properly be at City Hall nine-thirty in the morning, they can't receive adequate information through email, neither can we actually make any difference with the budget that we have. Um, so I agree, and I will push for more funding for the neighborhood associations, and I do agree with Ms. Lemay on revising, because I think it's maybe it's too many if you look at it, it's so many idle neighborhoods that don't have neighborhood officers, um, that are actually active. So I think neighborhoods where we have inactive officers and not efficient officers, I think those maybe need to be annexed, you know, maybe we do need to take the approach on the twenty-three neighborhoods. But to answer your question, I would, I, I am pushing for, and I have been pushing for more funding for the neighborhood, um, associations to, uh, do larger-scale projects.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? All right, well, we're going to go into, um, wrapping up, um, so I extend the same curse that we gave earlier, I'm going to give you three minutes apiece, um, to do your last pitch of why people should show up at the polls next week and vote for you.
Three minutes?
Okay, um, my name is Sergio Williams, and, uh, I'm twenty-four years old, and, uh, I represent a group of people that is poorly represented at City Hall. I don't think that we have a councillor or a council member or a candidate that's running for office in these races that fully represent the people that are being victims of crime and committing crimes. And so a vote for me would be increasing that transparency and helps someone that's young, that represents my age group, that can be a leading example, um, because they can't be what they can't see. And so that's one thing that I think that I will offer opportunity, is to give my generation an example and, and a way to make change and advocate change, because I think a lot of our generation, we lost hope, and we don't think that we can make change or make a difference. So a vote for me would be changing, it would, it would be to advocate change, it would be bringing in fresh water, fresh lead, fresh energy, somebody with fresh ideas to represent this age group of people that, in the news, they say we all lost generations. So I think that's giving the people who are not representing a voice, and the people who don't know a way, somebody to show them a way. So I think that is the reason why you should vote for me on the twenty-second.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Lemay?
Thanks to, I Believe in Birmingham for having this event tonight, thanks to everybody that showed up tonight. I know there's a lot of these events going on all over town, and this is a busy week. Um, a couple of points I just want to make that I didn't get to. One of the things that we need to do in all these city buildings that are sitting shuttered right now, is those can be our job training sites, those can be our computer training sites, we have the money to bring those, um, capabilities to city buildings. I want to see an all-out push by the next council, and whether I'm on the council or not, when these two fine young men are on the council, I hope that we can continue to work together, I've worked with them over the past year. Um, I think maybe they both ran because I encouraged them to run, so, um, I hope that we can legitimately continue to work together. Um, but I want to see every city building in this city, and we're sitting about five hundred feet from Gibson School, your alma mater, that school has been sitting closed for way too long. There are so many nonprofits in the, in the metropolitan area, we have got to get rid of the city-blighted property first. That's something that, in my neighborhood, nobody understands why, Kirby Schools sitting empty, why they have to do anything with their empty property. Um, another thing, if we talked a lot about the EPA, and I've been to, gosh, I guess thirty health department, A D M, EPA meetings, but the thing nobody ever talks about is, the technology exists to put on top of every smokestack in the city of Birmingham to clean that air before we breathe it. It's expensive technology. There is not one organization or one politician begging for that technology. The city metro area has two coke plants in it, there are twelve coke plants in the whole entire rest of the United States. There is a technology that you can put air cleaners on the top of the coke plants, and before that air bakes it into the neighborhood, and we have to clean up the soil and abate that problem, that air can be cleaned before it comes into the communities. The last thing I'd really like to see is, I want to see when the city council appoints somebody to a position, especially on the Transit Board, that they appoint a bus-riding person to that position. That is something that we have used board positions in this city as a reward for votes, and I want to see that if you're on the library board, it's because you take your kids and your grandkids to the library five days a week.